So Executive Order 2059 was issued by the Governor and went into effect today. It applies until September fifteenth and requires essentially four components. There's a component regarding temperature checks before students, visitors, staff members, and vendors enter school facilities for the first time during the day. There's a requirement regarding the wearing of masks. There's a requirement about social distancing. And there's a fourth requirement that's hand sanitizing and hand washing. I, we included in your packet a list of frequently asked questions from the Kansas State Department of Education that kind of addresses Executive Order 2059. And it's, it's our plan unless the Board directs us differently. We didn't build this into our COVID response plan in anticipation that it's going to expire on September fifteenth, but throughout the year, other executive orders may be issued. So we're really looking at just layering this on top of our plan. We would follow any requirements that are more restrictive than our plan while the executive order is in effect. So that's kind of been our intention on how to handle that. And we've provided that information so I could certainly answer any other questions you might have.
I have quite a lot to say about it, so I don't know if you're gonna, you have to move yourself.
Actually, Jennifer, I'm gonna have you move to the middle.
You want me to move?
Yeah, that way Mark and Janine can hear you. Sorry.
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure it's okay. And I wanna, can you hear me okay? Okay. And I wanna thank Dr. Carlin and Laura for being willing to add this to the agenda because um I re, I asked if we could do that. So um, and the reason I asked this issue to be added to the agenda is because I'm still concerned about requiring our students and our staff to be expected to wear masks for several hours a day. Um, and I have concerns about the, the Governor's requirement to take temperatures of every person entering the building. Uh, Dr. Burns even stated in her report that that wasn't the first symptom they looked for and wasn't necessarily reliable to detect a positive COVID case. So I feel like that's going to interfere a lot with the school day and uh conflict with having a smooth process of kids coming to school. As a Board member, I'm supporting the plan that we have put into pla, voted and put into place. I'm not arguing with that one. I just, um, I think it's a good plan. I hope that we can start at level three because I don't think that there's any time that it's good to require masks. I have a stack of information here citing from medical sources that explain the potential risk of long-term mask wearing. And these risks are abundant and more likely to occur than the chance of our children passing COVID on um to each other and to their teachers. I keep in mind that only two percent of COVID cases are children and with more than a ninety-nine percent survival rate in overall cases, I think we really need to focus more on the reliability of the district if we do require masks versus the liability of not requiring masks. Some of the potential side effects of having kids and adults in masks all day are kids coming to school with dirty food coverings which cause infections. And then I've even read some, and Dr. Henning can tell me I'm completely off on this, but there's some dentists using the term mask now from keep, having that over their face all day that could cause some dental gingivitis type issues. The emotional connections, anxiety in students that aren't comfortable in masks, uh, risk of staff infection or other serious infections like that, rash or an allergic reaction, and also concerns of weakening, a weakened immunity. Kids aren't made to live in a bubble where there's no germs. They don't live in a hospital setting every day. And when school starts, kids do get sick. There's colds, there's um the flu during that time of year, but if they are out in the community the other times and they're exposed to their ger, those types of germs, their immunity is going to be higher. And I also have concerns, there was a part I highlighted in the Governor's mandate where it said that uh our employees who are working in a room or office, um, well, that basically they're having to wear their masks even when they're in the office by themselves because of the potential of someone coming into the office. And so that's putting our, our employees in masks almost all day also without a break. And I, and I really feel like if we're working hard to uh keep kids distant at six feet, then why do they need to be in those masks all day? I just think that the district's plan is better and I, and I have the intention of making a type of motion that um can find a way for us to disregard or not follow the Governor's mandate, but instead start the school year off with our plan, which I think is better.
Thank you. Do you wanna go ahead and make your motion now and then we can have discussion on it?
That's fine. I would like to make a motion to ask the city, or the County Commission to relieve USD four-five-seven of the obligations contained within Executive Order 2059.
Is there a second? Jennifer, thank you for bringing this back up.
Thank you.
But without a second, um, I believe that we'll proceed on unless we want a specific motion um adhering to Executive Order twenty dash fifty-nine if anyone wants to make that. And I believe Dr. Carlin addressed it with how they were. Or do you feel like we need more clarification for you?
I think without an affirmative action to, to not follow it, I think we would be obligated to follow.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate your research and um your approach and how you wanted to handle this. So thank you so much for bringing this back up.
Yep.
Um, that moves us on to revisions of COVID nineteen response plan. Um, Mr. Tone, I believe you're up with regard to athletics and activities.
Um, first off, just, I would like to say thank you Madam Chair and the rest of the Board members for taking time to hear our plan as we move forward into bringing athletics and activities back to Garden City High School and Forest Good Middle School and Kenneth Henderson Middle School. Um, as we go through this, um, the goal of our plan is to have everything as normal as possible. Obviously with COVID and what is going on right now, it's very difficult for things to be normal, but that's been the goal of the district plan that they put out and that's the goal of our plan with athletics and activities. Um, we're gonna do this while keeping students and staff safe, as safe as possible. And we are going to have to make adjustments to any plan that we have. We're gonna see adjustments tonight to our district plan. I'm sure moving forward, there will be adjustments to this plan. Um, the plan that we developed, we, when we developed this, we sat down as a group. I developed it in conjunction with middle school athletic directors and principals. Uh, I also developed it in conjunction with input from other state athletic directors, WAC athletic directors, our coaches. Uh, I even spoke with a few of our athletes, a few of our parents, and some of our staff members. The plan that you guys, uh, that we're bringing forth to you guys is by far the most progressive plan that I've seen out there. Um, I've met with people from all over our conference. I've met with people out of our conference in the northeast part of the state, in the Wichita City League, in the ABCTL, and this is by far the most progressive plan. Uh, we have steps as we progress, just like our district plan, so that we, we are not just running blind into what we're planning on doing. You guys have heard me talk numerous times that our kids need activity and structure. Uh, a lot of our kids are academically in the middle of the road and without activities and athletics, they don't get any extra ac, uh, any extra support. A lot of our kids and our parents look to our coaches for that academic support and social emotional support. Um, the three areas of concern that we'll focus on tonight, how do we decide if and when we play a game? Who is at the game and what does the actual game look like? And what happens when we move to a blended or a full remote um type learning in phase five or in level five and six, what happens to athletics and activities? The plan, like I said, is not perfect. Um, it will change. We don't know. Nobody has a really good idea of exactly what's gonna happen. We're no different. And it will change, but I believe this plan gives us the best possibility of competing in our athletics and activities. Where we're gonna start with this is we're actually gonna start in level one. Each of our levels correspond with the district levels. We tried to somewhat mirror what the district is doing with the classroom, uh, with the extended classroom out on the fields and in the gymnasiums. Where we'll start is down in game, uh, in-game changes and practice changes. In level one and two, uh, in-game changes and practice changes, those things are gonna be standard throughout all the levels. So the, the changes that we make there, you'll see all the way through level five and six. Um, some of the things that you'll see, um, in in-game changes, these are changes that are gonna happen actually when we play the games. We're gonna enlarge locker room uh space. Uh, that does not mean build more locker rooms. It means utilize more locker rooms. We have plenty of locker rooms available down in our athletic hallway. Uh, instead of giving our uh teams and the opponents one locker room to change in, we'll give them two or three different locker rooms to change in so that they can socially distance easier. Uh, eliminate, elimination of any handshakes, we'll eliminate the point toss. Uh, we're gonna enlarge the sideline. That's not only for our players in competitions, but that's also for our cheerleaders and dance team that are on the sidelines. We're gonna extend quarters and timeouts. Uh, there will be game balls that are exchanged and cleaned throughout uh different competitions. Um, our coaches will have non-traditional locations for halftime and pre-game. There will be a restriction between fans and players after the game. A lot of times, parents and athletes get together after the game. We will eliminate that to eliminate any cross-contamination. Uh, individual players will have their own water bottles, uh, will main, maintain social distancing while on sidelines. Uh, face coverings will be recommended outside on sidelines for coaches and athletes and inside they will be uh required when we're in level three or during this Governor's uh mandate. Practice changes, uh, we continue to maintain attendance records. We will have daily screening of all coaches, players, and managers. Uh, we will maintain static groups when possible. Uh, we will social distance whenever not directly involved. Uh, face coverings will be recommended. Individual water bottles and cups uh will be used and we will obviously not be sharing personal equipment. Um, that is pretty similar in, in level one and level two. Everything is pretty well uh similar between the two levels. Once we get to level three, that's when things start to change drastically. So if you flip to uh level three, which is about three pages in, um, where we start to see the major changes uh in level three is in game decision while in attendance and and who's actually at the game. Um, I'll start with deciding how we're gonna uh choose to play or not. What we're going to do is a week out from, uh, from an event on every Monday, myself, somebody from the central office, um, the two middle school athletic directors, a middle school principal, and somebody from the Fannie County Health Department. We will have a meeting each week to go over the following week's activities, where we're going and who's coming to Garden City to participate. And if something is deemed high-risk, we will look at rescheduling those events. So if, if we look at a certain city and see that they have an increasing number of COVID cases and we do not feel comfortable sending our kids to that location, we will try to reschedule out of that or not play that game. That will happen regardless of what level we're in. We'll have those weekly meetings. Uh, in level three, where, where we're gonna see changes is in total uh capacity of stadiums and gyms. At level three, we'll have fifty percent capacity of the stadium and fifty percent capacity of the gym. Um, we will have fifty percent capacity of our student section and we will be limiting our visitors to three hundred seats out at the stadium. Uh, in level three, we'll have masked and temperature checks. Uh, if the Governor's order goes away and the district decides to go away from temperature checks, we will also go away from temperature checks. Uh, the student section outside will be limited to two hundred and inside it will be limited to one hundred. We normally will not have any issues with that. Uh, the band will be moved to the south end zone to free up seating for social distancing in the stands. Uh, they will, they are going to perform at pre-game and at halftime in level three. And the cheerleaders and dance team will have, will be limited to that level of competition. So if it's a varsity football game, only the varsity dance and varsity cheer will be there. If it's a freshman or a JV football game, that level of cheer and dance will be at the game. One thing that we're gonna have to focus on because we know that uh the number of people coming to our events will be dram, dramat, uh dramatically down, will be our live streaming capabilities. And we're going to livestream all varsity events when possible. Obviously, live streaming a cross-country meet or a tennis match is a lot more difficult than livestreaming a volleyball match or a band concert. As we move forward and move into level four, the big changes that we see, we'll continue our weekly meetings uh with the Fannie County Health Department and our administrators here in the district. We will then limit um out at the stadium for football. We will limit it to season ticket holders and immediate family only. Uh, inside visitor seating, or excuse me, visitor seating outside of the football stadium will be limited to two hundred tickets. And inside and at soccer matches, attendance will be limited to thirty-five percent. Uh, tickets at this point will be pre-sold whenever possible. We're trying to limit the amount of cash transactions that we have at that point. The student section will be cut down to twenty percent and at that point, the middle schools are going to eliminate any student section, uh, students in attendance, middle school students in attendance at their games unless accompanied by immediate family. Um, in-game, the band will be limited to a drum line in level four. The marching band at that point will not be playing halftime. They will only be, or will not be playing before the game. They will only be playing halftime. Everything else remains the same as far as cheer, concessions, and marching. When we get to level five, there's been a change here from what we originally had talked about. Uh, when we get to level five, originally we had talked about possibly eliminating and only practicing our JV and freshmen. Tim, Dr. Henning pointed this out and, and I'm actually in agreeance with him. At that point, we probably are going against what is best for our students by eliminating those competitions. So what we've done is when we move to level five, we're gonna continue those competitions, but we're gonna reschedule them to opponents that are closer in geographical um proximity. At this point, um, we will put a pause on middle school competitions. We will continue to practice middle school, but the middle school principals and athletic directors have expressed that they don't think it's possible to have those competitions because their kids would be traveling to school every other day at that point and a lot of their kids can't drive and would not be able to get to practice. So what, what they'll continue to do is they'll continue to practice. Whoever is at school on A day will practice that day. Whoever is at school on B day will practice that day. And then once they phase back out of five, level five and into level four, they'll start their practices back up. At that point, there will be no band at the game. Uh, they will only be marching at halftime, but they will continue to march. Uh, practices will change in level five. Uh, the, the big thing about level five for our district was making sure that classrooms can socially distance and that we have more space in the school to allow for social distancing. So at that point, what we would do is we would split up our teams and they would practice in groups of fifty percent of the team or less. Uh, the way we see that happening is cross-country having multiple practice, football having multiple practice, band having multiple practices available for those kids uh to participate. Level six, once we get to level six where we're not in school, all practices will be held virtually. Um, what we have to remember is practice is more than what happens on the field. It's also the, the study halls that we have and the communications that our ha, uh, our coaches have with kids uh outside of school. So we'll continue to have virtual practices to where our students are still involved uh with those activities so those things can continue, but obviously they will not be held at school. Uh, and all our competitions will be put on pause until we come back on to level six. So as I said before, I've met with a number of different athletic directors. I've met with a dou, a number of different principals from different areas and different schools. This is by far the most progressive. Um, I'm not gonna call out specific schools in an open board meeting, but some schools aren't doing anything. Some schools are just having competitions. They're uh opening up their football field. They're saying, we're gonna let whoever wants to come, come to the game. It doesn't matter whether that in levels, we're gonna go until we can't go anymore and, and hope that as many, we can get as many games in as possible. The approach that we've taken, I think, is a lot more judicious. I think it's a lot more progressive and I think it, it puts our community and our kids in a safer place and a more likely place to play uh as much of the season as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tone. Questions?
I do, I do have a few questions. I'm sorry, before you do that, Mr. Tone, could you repeat her question before you answer? Um, in terms of capacity, when we limit capacity, so is it just kind of a first come, first served or do you have a idea how that works?
So the question is, is, is when we limit capacity, how are we gonna limit capacity? In level three, it will be first come, first served, but people that have season tickets, uh, a lot of our parents are used to buying season tickets and used to getting those tickets. What we will do is we will sell those season tickets ahead of time. And if we sell seven hundred season tickets, we know the capacity out at the football stadium is right under four thousand, so we will take seven hundred off the top of two thousand. In that margin, we will only allow in thirteen hundred or so uh people into the game. And it will become first come, first served at that point.
Okay. And it doesn't seem that there's gonna be any differentiation between sports. So whether it's a contact sport or a less contact sport. Should I take this? I know, it's so hard.
I have to.
Okay. So there doesn't seem to be any differentiation in sports, like contact sports versus a less contact sport? Is that, they'll all be treated equally?
Yeah, so our plan is to treat them equally. Um, the, the big concern that, that we've seen.
Mr. Tone, can you repeat the question?
Oh, the question is, are we gonna treat non-contact sports the same as contact sports? Was the question. Um, yes, we are gonna treat them equally. We're not gonna choose one sport over another. What we've seen over the summer is we've seen in Kansas, thousands of sporting events go on over the summer. Thousands of basketball games have been played, thousands of baseball games have been played, softball games. All those things have been happening all summer. The big sticking point with, when it, when it comes to COVID, there hasn't been a lot of co clusters according to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. There haven't been a whole lot of clusters that actually came from those sporting events. Uh, the, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment reported nine clusters and of those nine clusters, there were sixty-five cases. And I'm talking to the administrators at CASHA, most of those cases were adults. So our biggest concern isn't the student in participation when it comes to those kinds of things. Our biggest concern is the adults. And I was talking even with tennis. Tennis, our courts are very tight. So even at tennis, we're gonna have to limit the number of people there because the biggest chance of exposure isn't people hitting the ball back and forth, it's the people sitting in the stands.
And then just lastly, can you hear me if I speak in this thing? So it just has temps taken before the game? Is that, and that's the athletes, but what happens if a player has a temp?
So the question is, we will, um, she stated that we will take temperatures be, before the games. The question was what will happen if a player does have a temperature? If a player has a temperature, what we're planning on doing here at Garden City High School, well, in, within the WAC is if Great Bend is coming to Garden City to play, Great Bend takes temperatures of their student athletes before they get on the bus because we don't want to, Great Bend doesn't wanna get on a bus with a kid that has a hundred and forty degree temperature and drive two and a half hours. So they'll take the temperature prior to getting on the bus. We'll do the same when we go to Great Bend or when we're getting ready to play an event. If a student athlete has a temperature over a hundred point three, if it's a hundred point four or above, they will be refer, referred to our nurse and our nurse will refer them to the county health department and they'll make the decision on whether or not they're gonna allow the athlete to come back and compete or not. It will not be made by me, our athletic trainer, or the coach.
Thank you.
Do you have some questions?
You can imagine, I might.
Yep.
You mentioned that um at game time or sometime in the week of game time, that you may make a decision not to travel to what you might classify as a high-risk community. How would you classify a high-risk community?
I wouldn't classify a high-risk community. I, oh, the question was, you're going to make a decision on whether or not to travel to a high-risk community? How would you classify a high-risk community? Um, I wouldn't classify a high-risk community. That's why we have our Fannie County Health Department involved and those schools that we're traveling to, they will have their uh county health departments also involved in that.
So previously, we heard from Dr. Burns that um there is no definition for quote-unquote a hotspot and/or a high-risk community. Would it be fair to say that um a high-risk community would be a community that's experiencing increase in the number of COVID infections?
The question is, would it be fair to say that a high-risk community is a community that is experiencing an increase in COVID um positive cases?
Yeah.
Was the question. I would tell you that I'm not the expert on determining whether a community is or isn't that. That's why we're gonna bring the Fannie County Health Department in with those meetings.
My trouble is that when I was trying to get definition from Dr. Burns about hotspot and/or a high-risk community, that, that definition was very nebulous. There is no true definition. So for example, if you define a high-risk community as someone who's experiencing an increase in the rate of COVID infections, then by definition, Fannie County is a high-risk
Is that a question?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to pin down, so we, we're trying to assess the safety of your plan, which by the way, I wanna compliment you on your plan. It's very much, um, it's much more developed than the last time we were um exposed to it. I think you put a lot of thought into it and I am, I'm trying to pin down what exactly is our definition of high-risk? Because we have competing interests. You have the interests of those who participate in sports, those whose kids participate in sports, those who make their living as athletic directors and/or um people involved in sports. So you have those competing interests against the competing interest of um public safety. Without knowing what your definition is of a high-risk community, um, as a Board member, I have no way of knowing whether or not um those decisions about appropriateness of travel are made in the best interest of kids or in the best interest of a sport. kids or in the best interest of a sport.
Dr. Hennington, I think that's a really good question. Um, one of the challenges here is there's not a lot of modeling data out there in reference to exactly what you're talking about. And I think that's part of the rationale of having a collective group that has district administrators, building administrators, our athletic directors and the local health department represented because we certainly have a lot to learn about that. No different than what we're gonna learn when we begin bringing kids back to school. Um, so I, I, I understand the desire for, uh, a very specific indicator. I think it will be a combination of indicators. You know, from our standpoint, if, if we're gonna go to a contest at a school that hasn't had any cases compared with a school that's had positive cases, that would certainly come into play. If we're gonna go to a school who has, uh, that particular activity, has not had any positive cases compared with a week ago, three weeks ago, five weeks ago, that particular school had members of the team that we would compete with that had positive cases, those kind of things would enter into, I think, our calculus as to would it be appropriate to, to continue to have that contest? So I, I don't know that we can tell you yet without some experience and some modeling information that this is exactly what it would look like. I think the effort here will be to have the athletic directors who have that kind of information with the health department experts that have the information about what's going on in their community. Um, and, and, uh, the, the choices are taking an ultra-conservative approach and, and choosing not to participate because of what could happen, um, and balancing that with taking an approach that's hopefully based on data, uh, of what's more likely to happen. But nobody has that right now. And so I, I think, um, I, I think that's our idea of getting those, the right people at the table, um, to, to be able to identify what are those critical characteristics and, and then how do we, you know, as we move through this, there will be some tough decisions that have to be made. Um, and we'll probably be better at it two weeks in and four weeks in than we are, uh, at the beginning because we'll have better data to be able to, to make those decisions.
Um, can I ask a follow-up question? Um, has our county health, um, department, Dr. Burns, has she, um, what is her, um, stance on the advisability of traveling for sports? Has she made a, a position?
Um, the, the, I think Dr. Burns told us in the meeting, um, two weeks ago, that she would prefer that no one traveled for sports.
She would prefer that no one traveled for sports?
I believe, I believe that's what, I believe that's what her comment was.
Oh, I heard that. So if we are in, in consultation with, um, experts in different counties at our health department, would we expect that they might have, um, a different point of view than her? I suppose it would probably be related to, um, the infection rates.
Yeah, I, I'm sure that, understanding that our health department people are looking at it clearly from the medical standpoint, I think they would be likely to be very conservative in what they would encourage people to do.
If we, um, if we envision that some of the, um, JV and freshman teams might be in a position to just travel more locally in order to try to create a more safe environment, do you have any anticipation that some of those towns who have much less infection rates in their county might be unlikely to actually want Garden City to come and travel to their town?
So the question is, um, knowing that we might try to ask our JV and freshman teams to travel more regionally, might there be some resistance with the, the closer schools to us to want Garden City to come? And I'm gonna repeat that question and let Mr. Tong, the expert, tackle it.
So we've already been in contact with a lot of area schools and we've been welcomed with open arms to a lot of that stuff. Uh, when you think of cross-country meets and tennis meets and golf meets, um, generally there's open space available. When things become problematic is when you have one team versus another team. Um, we've even been able to line up backup plans. I've been able to line up backup plans for JV and freshman football. I've been able to line up backup plans for JV and freshman volleyball. That hasn't been an issue at all.
Then, uh, you've been extremely careful about all the different ways of surface transmission, whether that be coins, water bottles, um, seems very well thought out. Let me ask you a question. How are you gonna get the kids to a different town?
On a bus.
So how many kids would be on a bus?
Uh, it depends. That's all based on Mr. Stilian and, and his numbers that he does. I don't manage the transportation piece of it.
Does it all seem inconsistent to you to be able to pack kids on a bus with or without coaches, travel to a different city, expose the kids in a face-to-face manner with an opposing team whose status you do not know, put the kids back on a bus and release them in a school the next day? Does that seem inconsistent with your efforts to maybe wipe down the coin or make sure they have the proper water bottles?
Those things are KESHA mandated. All of those wipe down the coins and water bottles, which I think are smart decisions. But I think as far as traveling from Garden City to a competition outside of Garden City, I think the reward far outweighs the risk that we're putting our kids under.
thanks for your time.
Yep. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yep.
Um, I know you probably covered this earlier in the action plan, but when you talk to the other districts, um, when is the, when do you make the go, no-go decision to go to that? Let me, and this kind of follow-up statement, but sometimes you just, unless you talk to the Fennec County Health Administrator of our town and then the health administrator with that athletic director, are those numbers up to date as of that day to make that decision? And is this a week ahead of time or is this the date of? Cause I'm sure there's a lot of planning involved.
Did you guys on the Zoom hear that question?
I'm sorry.
You did? Okay. So how we'll make the decision, we're actually gonna make the decision. So we'll come in on a calendar week. We'll come in on Monday on a calendar week and we're looking at the following, following calendar week. So we're coming in Monday and we're looking at the following calendar week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So we're making the decision a week in advance. Um, there's been some questions on whether we should make it sooner or whether we should make it later. A week in advance is about as close to the event as we can make it and still have time for that other school or us to be able to set up and manage the event in time when we refer to officials, gatekeepers, score, score clock keepers. All of those things take time to set up. So by doing that a week in advance, we should have plenty of time to still line up all that stuff or cancel all of those brokers.
And then, um, on your level three, level four, talk about.
Can, can I throw in one more thing there? Um, we're gonna make that decision, but if new data becomes available, there's an outbreak that happens the day before, we may need to make a last-minute decision. The hope is not to have to do that, but if, if new data becomes available at Garden City High School or in the community of Garden City or with the school we're gonna play, we will make that decision at the last minute if necessary.
Dr. Carlin said, "We will make a decision last minute if it is necessary." The hope is that we can project a week out.